Time is, uh... Oh, my... Come on. Six forty?
Six forty.
Time is six forty and I call this regu... I mean, special board meeting to order. Today is June the nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. And let the record reflect that President... Well, the only board member that is not here is Dr. Richard Rivera. Other than that, we have all members are here. Item three, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to change the date of the regular board meeting of July tenth, two thousand seventeen. Dr. Canales.
This item was requested by our board president, Adasmo Lopez, to move the meeting for July tenth, two thousand seventeen, to Thursday, July sixth, two thousand seventeen.
I will be out of town, so that's why I'm asking this. And if the board is available for July the sixth, I'll entertain a motion or another date.
I'm available on the sixth. Anyone else?
I'm available.
I get back on the fifth. I'm available.
Okay. So move.
Second? Yeah. Who seconded it?
Patrick.
Okay, I have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick to approve moving the meeting from July second, July tenth, to July sixth. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item four, discussion and possible action for... To approve the WISD Early Learning Foundation Program collaboration with Hidalgo County Head Start Program. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, our staff members, Ms. J.D. Peña, Ms. Melva Segura, Ms. Sue Peterson, have been working on a memorandum of understanding for the school readiness model between Westaco ISD and the Hidalgo County Head Start Program to serve eligible three- and four-year-olds. This MOU is going to make it happen. As we all know, pre-K education is important. There's lots of research that shows that early childhood education is the link to close the achievement gap for second language learners and for children from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. This program will give kids an early start in developing vocabulary skills, social skills, literacy skills, fine motor skills, and will help get our kids ready for kindergarten. So we're requesting and recommending the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Hidalgo County Head Start Program.
So move.
I'll second. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar. Any discussion?
Yes.
Which Head Starts do these include?
These include the Head Start... Ms. Peña, will you please... We're looking at six classrooms, one hundred and twenty students, at the bridge area of FDR, and it's a Head Start that's moving the location.
Yes. It's Head Start, Westaco One, located in La Placita, are asking to move to one of our facilities. And in doing so, they will be moving four classrooms, which we also had an MOU with in sending two teachers. So... But in moving to FDR, to the North Bridge area, there's a group of classrooms, and they would take six classrooms instead of four, increasing the student population by forty students. And they would take two more classrooms for offices and a kitchen... kitchenette area to receive the food. They would have their own janitorial services, food services. All we would provide would be the facilities and the teachers.
Ms. Peña, now, at one time, we had reached out to the one, possibly the ones in Mercedes. Did anything ever come?
You mean the TMC and...
Is that... Yes.
The formerly Texas Migrant Council Teaching and Mentoring Communities. We're still working with them. They also wanted to move into those facilities. They would like to have four classrooms.
How many students would be...
And it's a work in progress right now.
Okay.
They would bring in an additional sixty students. And they would come... Bring the students from Mercedes over here.
Let me ask you another question, if you don't mind. Are there any other centers around our Mid Valley area that maybe we can reach out to since we're the only district that kind of does it? Where it could possibly enroll and get our enrollment up?
Well, yes. As a matter of fact, I sent out an email to Dr. Canales and to other cabinet members. Hidalgo County Head Start, the director, executive director, reached out, and there's a possibility, it's a work in progress, we're still researching it. They asked us if we would take two hundred of their students that are located in Donna. These are Head Start students. They are not Donna ISD students. They are Head Start students. Some of them are from Westaco. Not all of them. Some of them live in Donna. But they asked, they have ten classrooms, and they asked that we would send five of our certified teachers. The reason why is because Donna ISD does not want to send teachers to them, that they're not willing to do that. But the Hidalgo County Head Start people firmly believe that sending public school teachers into the Head Starts has really made a tremendous difference for the students, are really being prepared for public education. And all the districts have gone into partnership with them, with the exception of Donna and Progreso at this point. So that's just starting. Those are talks that are starting.
Dr. Canales, if you could please... I know right now we're only voting on the forty, but the potential of the sixty and the potential of two hundred... So that's two sixty. You know, we're going to keep our ADA at the sixteen-one. You know, the additional students will help the ADA.
Right. And we'd be happy to research the impact on enrollment for students in a way...
And...
Just to see the impact in enrollment. I'm not too sure right now if you're in Donna ISD whether it'll count for enrollment or whether we'll be sending teachers and not generating the ADA. So we'd have to look at possible solutions.
That's something we have to research.
Right.
If it would have to be open enrollment district, there's a lot of other issues that need to be looked at.
Okay. We can find out and send it up in the update, please.
Logistically speaking, for the pickup and drop off at Roosevelt, has that been worked out already?
Yes, sir. Parking for parents, for Head Start parents, has also been worked out. Playground has been worked out. Everything has been, yeah, for the facilities. They... The classrooms were in such condition that they would only take... Could only take seventeen students according to licensing. But because we're putting an extra bathroom facility in the classroom area, they can now each have twenty students per classroom. So we're going to have a hundred and twenty.
Okay. Awesome. It's a hundred and twenty, right?
Yeah. Well, that's a good thing. Does it affect our dollars, Andres? Budget? Do you have the money?
Yes. Well, we'll need more additional vacancies on teachers to provide for that. We'll have to, like Ms. Peña said, look at the enrollment figures and more or less come up with a projected ADA. Because the money comes from actually coming to school and not from being enrolled. So comparing, for example, the Els Academy, younger students, how often they come to school, we can come up with a projection of ADA and give you better information that way.
Okay. Please. The one thing I also want to do, since you all are working and moving forward on this, is looking at all-day, all-day classes for the little ones. So, good job.
All pre-K, not just Head... Because Head Start is already all-day.
Right.
Our pre-K...
Right. The rest of the pre-K.
Yeah, the one that is not, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving the Early College Learning Foundation Program collaboration with Hidalgo County Head Start Program? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item five, discussion and possible action to approve a lease agreement with Hidalgo County acting by and on behalf of Hidalgo County Head Start Program. Dr. Canales.
Hey, we're recommending your approval of the lease with Hidalgo County for the use of FDR by the Hidalgo County Head Start Program. For some reason, staff explained it as grant requirements for Head Start. Head Start can't lease from us, but the county's willing to do that so that we can get the program started.
I'll move.
All right. We got me and Patrick.
Patrick?
I second.
And a second by Oscar. Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to approve a lease agreement with Hidalgo County acting by and on behalf of Hidalgo County Head Start Program. Any discussion? I have a question for legal. I just want to make sure that there's no... Nothing's going to come back and bite us later. I'm totally for it, but make sure that our legal department checks all the contracts and that make sure that they're in line with our laws.
This was reviewed by legal counsel, I believe.
We've... Our office has reviewed it, and we're okay with it.
Okay. George, good to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item six, discussion and possible action to approve the summary of policy recommendations as prepared by Tasby Policy Service. Dr. Canales.
Hey, Board of Trustees, in February, Tasby, we had a Tasby representative work with our district and campus-level administrators to review policies. This was considered an audit of our localized policy manual. The next step for us tonight, and we recommend this, is to take actions on the summary of recommendations resulting from this review session, and that you're not adopting at this point any policy changes, which you are, as you're adopting the summary for Tasby to review, and then we'll bring it back to you once that review happens for the policy revision. So this is just the approving the summary of the recommendations, and leading this effort was Sadio Garcia.
Thank you.
He's here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. Good evening, Mr. Lopez and members of the board. On February the twenty-first and twenty-second, Tasby Policy Services and Westaco ISD did in fact conduct a policy review session of the district's local policies. My understanding is that had been quite a while since the last policy review, maybe as long as ten years. The policy review session included forty-four policies, to be exact. A representative from Tasby led the review, and the district administrators provided feedback on the policies pertaining to their respective departments. We received the packet with the summary recommendations, which is what you have before you, and the annotated policies. In early March, eight policies were deleted, twenty-five were revised, nine were replaced, and two were added. I did consult with Dr. Rivera, and I did inform Mr. Kennedy that I would be meeting with Dr. Rivera since they are members of the board member representatives in the Policies Committee, because I wanted some guidance as to how to present these. Since forty-four policies is a lot, I didn't want it to make it so cumbersome for you to have to sit here and listen to forty-four policies. Excuse me. The different departments who are impacted by the policy changes did review the recommended changes, and tonight we are bringing to you the summary of the Tasby recommendations for your approval, so that we may send them... Send Tasby the board response again. As Dr. Canales said, you're not taking action on the policy themselves. We are just bringing forth... Or bringing to you the policy recommendations from Tasby. However, there are four policies that we don't agree with, and we would like the board to be aware of and get some input from you. We will review these shortly. Then after reviewing the approved responses on the proposed changes, Tasby will make the appropriate changes on the files, and they will order a reprint of our district manual, which will be sent back, and then that is when you will approve the changes to our policies. At this time, I would like to just present four policies that are in question. If you look at the list that is before you, the first one we checked no is to DEC Local. And the summary report that you have did not include... If you notice in red, I went ahead and included just a very, very brief title of those policies to make it easier for you. So if you look at the four... The first policy that was in question that we answered no to, that's the DEC Local on leaves and absences. And the reason for this is because this policy, Tasby struck out the information where it talks about the professional employees that are docked forty dollars for each full leave day used and twenty dollars for each half-day used as well. Paraprofessionals and auxiliary employees shall be docked twenty dollars for a full leave day and ten dollars for each half-leave day used. We don't agree with this. We would like to consider keeping it the same with your approval. The reason for this is because, first of all, Ms. Melva Segura, in case you have any questions, she's here to answer on... Because this is a human resources policy, but she did have some information that she would like to share with you.
Good evening, members of the board. I went ahead and provided you with a packet with information that we'd like to share with you. As Mr. Garcia mentioned, we did have the option of not including this policy as part of the review. However, we had previously received a request from a Mr. Nieto for us to take a look at this policy. This is one of the popular policies that is kind of mentioned every two, three years. And I'd like to explain the reason why. We are one of the very few, if not the only, in our region that is still charging employees for leave docs. And so this is a common request that comes up, and I'd like to share with the new board members the information as to the justification why we have continued with the same practice. So for that reason, we elected to leave it on the review so that we can provide this additional information to you, so that you can make your decision based on that. So in your packet, I went ahead and included a summary of the money that is generated through the employee docs. And I believe the annual total due to the doc collection is seven hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine. I also did a little breakdown for you. Aside from the employee docs for leaves and absences, we also cover substitute pays, which have to cover the classroom any time an employee is absent. So the total pay for substitutes for the sixteen-seventeen school year was two-point-one million, almost two-point-two. The docs that were generated from the professional teaching staff were six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And so that left a difference of one-point-five million. So I wanted to share this information with you because removing and considering removing this policy and not charging employees for docs, we would have to totally fund the substitute pay of two-point-two million dollars. So in docking these small amounts, it helps us generate some of the cost to cover their classrooms. And part of the justification in your packet, I also included a Tasby salary teacher survey. And this is something that we've kind of mentioned during the taper report presentation, during the budget presentation workshops, that while twenty and forty dollars is not a lot, some employees might feel that it is. It does help kind of curve the absenteeism with staff. But if you really consider the teacher pay scale, we are, as I've mentioned, we're above the region and the state. I've provided that information to you. In every category, from zero, a first-year teacher, all the way up to twenty years and the highest range, we are above a hundred percent on the... Compared to the market. I did highlight for you, there are only two districts nearby, which is La Jolla ISD and Laredo United, that are a little bit, slightly above our starting pay. And so we feel that because we are one of the highest, if not the highest paid, we have great benefits as far as our health insurance. We do feel that this is a practice that we would want to continue. It generates money that is being recovered to pay substitutes to cover those classrooms. And so we would like to recommend that we continue with the same practice.
So just, right now, like for a teacher, if she calls in sick, we dock them, what, forty dollars?
Yes. We dock forty dollars for a full day of sick leave, and we dock twenty dollars for a half-day. For paraprofessionals, that fee is cut in half, twenty dollars for a full day and ten dollars for a half-day.
Not every time they're off.
No. Correct.
Only for personal days.
Yes.
Only for... Only for personal, right?
Yes.
Not for sick days.
The example was provided was for sick. If I'm a teacher and I'm sick and I call in, will I be docked?
Correct.
No.
I'm sorry.
If I'm a teacher and I call in, I'm sick, and I have to be home sick or go to the doctor's sick.
No, you're correct. It's only for personal.
Okay.
Yes.
And again, I've never agreed with it, and I still don't agree with it, even though I understand the extra money that the district does get. And yes, we're the highest paid in the valley, but you look at all the other districts that don't charge anything, and yet you can compare whoever's third, that's a thousand dollars behind Westaco. They don't charge, you know, and that's just... I believe in that and, you know, understand the monies and so forth, but I believe in the long run for teachers and staff, I don't think they should be docked. But that's my opinion.
How many days do they get?
They get five from state and five personal. So it's a total of ten.
Ten personal?
Yes.
Ten per year?
Five and five, man. So it's a total of ten days.
And those are the ones that carry over?
The state do.
Coach, I'm along with you as far as that, but I would compare the same districts and look at what they get as far as their benefit package.
Correct.
What they pay into their insurance as opposed to nine dollars we pay here. And maybe that kind of offsets it and balances it out. So although we may not like it, you know?
I agree.
But again, it may balance out.
What percent of their pay would you say they're getting docked? Is it half?
Oh, it's... Well, if you look, it's forty times five. That's two hundred dollars.
It would be two hundred dollars for a year.
Fifty thousand, it's a...
I know, but on a daily... What a teacher makes daily, you know?
Teacher on average is maybe two fifty.
The daily rate could vary from...
It's a very small amount.
What's the first-year's teacher rate? At forty-seven, whatever, we're at forty-seven, too. Andres, you're the numbers guy.
Very little the amount that they will get docked.
But let me ask a question. Is this across the district or is it just teachers?
Everybody.
Anybody, right? Everybody?
Professionals, paraprofessions.
And so we have the forty-twenty versus the twenty-ten for paraprofessions, all manual trades.
Well, we're not voting today anyway.
No.
No, 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 no. We just wanted to give you information so that you can understand the recommendation that we were making as to why we would want to continue the same way.
True.
We're trying to generate as much as we can to alleviate any local costs without having to let go of any positions or staff members. And so we acknowledge that, well, nobody would want to be charged. It has to come from somewhere, and we're just trying to help the fund.
And Andrew has a good point. The school district does pay for the health insurance, which is quite a big amount, and the TRS and so forth. And of course, our salary are up there. But still, I don't believe in docking when people are going to be out. That's just my personal opinion.
How many other districts have similar policy? Do we know?
Actually, I think we're the only one in our nearby.
Yes.
And that was the reason that Tasby kind of selected the policy, because in reviewing for this update, they kind of take out what is not the norm for their Tasby policies, and this is one of them, because we're one of the very few that continue doing it.
Right. And we've been at the forty-twenty since we...
Correct. And it's a policy that continues to be brought up because we are, you know, the only in our area. But like we mentioned, we're way above also our region in the salary, and that has always been the justification. And so it's continued on throughout the years.
True.
So if we're... How many days does a teacher work?
One eighty-seven.
One eighty-six or one eighty-seven?
One eighty-seven.
So if we were to, you know...
Hold on. So that's... Their daily rate is probably about two fifty-two?
Yes.
So the most out-of-pocket is going to be two hundred?
For the year, yeah.
For the year. Yeah. So it's one day.
It's one day.
Just saying.
No, I don't... So if we wouldn't dock the employees, then we would have to budget that amount, which is the six thousand... Or six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six thirty-nine.
Additional money.
Additional money to the budget, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Because substitute pay does come out of the local fund, so...
Not unless you had an incentive program for attendance for teachers, then you could offset that if you had an attendance incentive. But we don't, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's...
More money for these.
Right.
Yes.
Whatever we decide later on, that's good information, anyway.
Thank you. And that's why I wanted to provide it to you.
You know, if you look at the... And I know this is a school, a government entity, but in private industry, you don't show up.
You don't get paid.
And they take the full thing, not just a little bit.
I'll take the forty dollars, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the summary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the summary as prepared by Tasby Policy Service. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item seven, discussion and possible action for the board to approve...
Mr. Lopez, please forgive me to interrupt, but we still have three more.
Okay.
That we'd like to introduce to you.
Oh, you're going to present three more?
Yes, three more so that you can be aware of those policies.
These are three more where we're saying we're not agreeing with the Tasby revisions, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is DHE Local. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You're going to present, but we've already voted, so this is just for information purposes?
Yes.
Can we go back?
My suggestion would be to hear the proposals and if... Take them as informational, and then we can sit on the vote.
Yeah, there's no...
Unless we decide otherwise, we can address it if somebody's going to change their mind. But I would say just hear the proposals and see what the thought is.
Vote us.
Take it as informational.
Okay, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay. May I continue?
Okay, let's continue and give us the other ones, and at that point, we might change our mind as to if we want to approve it or not. Is that what you're saying?
Right. Correct. Right.
So do we have to call the vote, vote back?
Yes. If you have to rescind... Here's the thing, what you're accepting right now is just the summary as presented to you, okay? You're not actually accepting the revisions. What the summary, as it's being presented to you by staff right now, is going to be sent off to Tasby, and they will incorporate the revisions as we accept them. Right now, you've accepted them with rejecting four of the proposed revisions.
Which is a recommendation by the district.
Which is a staff recommendation.
Right. Come back at a later time.
Correct.
Which is why I think Mr. Kennedy went that route. We believe you, we trust you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. And yes, I failed to mention that there was forty-four policies and that most of them we agree with. It's just these four that we had concerns on. The next policy is the DHE Local, and this one deals with searches in alcohol and drug testing. This one also, I discussed with Mike de la Rosa, this involves the employee who operates a commercial motor vehicle, including a bus, and commits a drug-related DOT violation. And here, it says that the driver may be reinstated as a driver if he or she successfully completes a turn-to-duty test, and the employee may also be subject to follow-up tests. In my discussion with Mr. de la Rosa, and Mr. de la Rosa, if you'd like to add something, we disagree with this because we don't bring the employees back after they have been... After they have tested positive for violating a drug-related violation, then we don't bring them back.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President. We've always had a zero-tolerance policy when it comes to drugs, especially if they're driving a school bus. So certainly, we would not want to take the risk if there's a positive drug test, you know, whatever hoops they may jump through, we feel it's not in our best interest to bring them back.
Okay. Not just on a school bus, is that correct?
Yes.
Any...
That includes anybody.
Anybody.
But under this policy, it would include a school bus.
Okay. So like a coach that gets a DWI? Do y'all find out about it, or how does that work? Y'all get a...
They have a certain amount of time to report it, to include it.
These are, if I may, these are people that are in safety-sensitive positions.
Right.
So mainly your bus drivers, your maintenance workers. There are some staff that are considered in a safety-sensitive position because they do transport students, say in a school suburban. So as those come up, if they're professionals, then they would go through the regular administrative process that they're required to go through with TEA if we let them go for that, so... But not all teachers, no. Just our safety-sensitive individuals.
And if they're a coach that drives kids...
Potentially, yes. This could potentially cause a professional or a coach to be let go, but that's another process because they'd have to go through a hearing through TEA.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
The next policy is DMA Local, and this deals with the required staff development. And this one is just a matter of language. In this particular policy, it talks about the prior approval for professional and paraprofessional personnel attending conventions, conferences, workshops, and seminars on weekends, holidays, summer vacation, or other non-instructional time, and be credit with time equivalency. Here, it says staff development, but we have the time equivalency program, which has additional requirements. So it's just a matter of language. Ms. Peterson, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add on that, since this deals with staff development? So it's just a matter of language. Uh, Ms. Peterson, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add on that, since this, uh, deals with staff development?
Uh, the issue was that the way it read, if someone could read that we're approving any out-of-town conference or weekend event to count for time equivalency, and we are not approving everything for time equivalency, so that has to be approved. So for staff development, uh, teachers have to accrue three hundred hours over a period of time to renew their license, so it does count for that, but it does not count for our time equivalency always. That's got to be approved. That has separate procedures.
Do you have one more? Correct?
What, yes, the last one. The last one is, uh, the FFAC local, uh, deals with medical treatment under Wellness and Health Services. And this particular policy, uh, talks about, um, the district shall purchase non-prescription medication that may be used to prevent or treat illness or injury in the district's athletic program. So I went ahead and reviewed this with, uh, Coach Riojas. It says only a licensed athletic trainer or a physician licensed to practice medicine in the state of Texas may administer this medication and may these, do so only if, and then it stipulates in what circumstances. However, in my discussion with Coach, he says none of our athletic trainers, um, give the medication to the student, so this is something that we'd also like, uh, to, for them to, to leave out of the policy. Coach, I don't know if you have anything else to add on that?
Correct. We, um, as a former athletic trainer, we, we just, it's just not a good practice, in my opinion, to provide medication to students, especially during a contest, uh, simply because of X reasons such as, you know, the students are allergic to a certain medication. There's a lot, a lot of students with allergies nowadays. And then also, when you give a medication, you can also, uh, kind of help keep very serious symptoms from coming up, such as concussions and things of that nature, so. We don't give medication to students, uh, after school, during school, and especially not during a contest.
Okay. And that's the way it's always been?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay. That's the, the four of them?
Yes, sir. And, uh, and just FYI, I did review the legal policies, just to ensure that we're not violating any of these local policies. Uh, so, uh, again, these are just, uh, uh, recommendations from Tasby. Uh, we will provide the chart that you have. We were supposed to select yes or no, and then at the very end, they, again, they will send us the final manual, and then that's when you will vote for those policies. And if we need to make any changes at that point, we will do so. Okay?
All righty.
Uh, and by the way, if there's any questions on any of the other forty policies, staff is here to answer your questions, so.
No?
No. All right, thank you.
And just to be clear, you, you've now accepted the summary as its recommendation, as it's been recommended by, by staff? Should you want to, at this point, after hearing, uh, what, uh, what Cecilia said, uh, revisit anything, it would take a motion to revisit and, and rescind, but, um.
Okay, well, just earlier, we voted to accept the revisions, and now we've, uh, we've heard them, and they're recommendations by Tasby and our staff. So does anybody have, uh, a concern that they want to address? No. Everything's good.
And, and these will come back to you later for that?
Yeah, so, so really, we're just, uh, approving the recommendations. They'll come back to us, and then we'll approve the actual document.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so we're, we're good on that. Moving on to item number seven, discussion and possible action for the board to approve a change order for the vinyl, installation of vinyl composition tile, BCT, at West School East High School Library as part of the tile installation project at five school campuses. RFP number seventeen dash zero five dash thirty-nine. Dr. Canales.
At this time, we're requesting your approval of change order number one, which consists of the following: reflooring of Wesaco East High School Library. Uh, please note that it was not part of the original scope of work. However, administration initiated this request due to the condition of the current flooring, floor covering. Since the base project already included tiling of the East High School front offices, uh, administration's position seems logical to move ahead and request this change order. This change order is needed due to the condition of the existing carpet, but it would also save us money since work crews are already on campus. So the total cost for change order is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, administration, and I am recommending that you approve change order number one for the tile installation project at five campuses, which consist of installing vinyl composition tile at Wesaco East High School Library. And we've been in contact with Mr. Cantu about this, Dr. Cantu about this.
And it's coming from the maintenance tax note we've already passed, right?
The maintenance tax note, uh.
No, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, 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 I've double-checked. Yes, it is.
Then I move to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to approve change order number one for the tile installation at, uh, Wesco East High School. Discussion?
Yes. Um, what's the difference between going vinyl and going tile?
Vinyl tile?
Dr. Cantu, it's your request. Can you come up, please? You're okay, Andres?
I think your question would be, what was original, what were you going to use originally?
Yeah.
And the orig- the original intent was to refinish the concrete and just leave it as an unfinished concrete. The cost was prohibitive. Uh, we were looking at at least twice the amount, and also with a very short warranty. I think it was one person came in.
One year.
With a zero and one came in with a one year, which told me that that, you know, work wasn't very confident, and they didn't think that that would last very long. If you think that that's going to be, you know, lasting five, ten, fifteen years, then you'll give a little bit, you know, of a warranty, but when that came back, told me that there was no confidence in the product that they were, you know, proposing, and I didn't want to have to be dealing with repairs to the floor, having to redo that on a yearly basis, because with a zero-year warranty, there's no guarantee.
So what we approved was all tile at all the schools, right?
At the fi- at the five schools, correct?
And you're wanting vinyl?
Well, we looked at, uh, the.
No, it was vinyl.
The tile, the carpet tile, but that was also cost prohib- prohibitive. I, I think it was, uh.
Thirty, almost thirty-three thousand.
So we were looking at, because of, uh, the need to get rid of that carpet, we rather have.
I'm okay with removing the carpet and giving you tile, but you're asking me to spend twenty-one thousand dollars for it. Just asking why? What, what's the difference between the tile and the vinyl?
It's the same thing.
I don't understand the question.
He was not going to go originally with, with BCT at all.
At all.
Where's the ceiling of the floor?
Are we sure that the square footage is correct, that they did not include it, and now we're asking for it again?
No, 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 no. That area was not addressed in the.
That area was never addressed.
Oh.
We took that out because we had proposed.
This is, this is a new, a new project.
Yeah, it's a new area.
We had proposed the unfinished concrete look.
Okay.
You know, the same concrete, and it's, it's a real nice look, and it's pretty durable, but my understanding is that when the building was built, it was built to be covered. So the finishing on the concrete is going to be different even under the, that carpet, so when you pull that up, there's going to be a lot of sanding and prep work that's going to go into getting that concrete to be, uh, visible.
Right, okay, I'm good. Okay. Well, the only, the only concern I had that, 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 uh, it had been covered the first time around.
No.
And, and then that, uh, they're doing it again, but if it's not, it's just one time.
Separate area, separate area, totally.
Okay. We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to approve the, the change order for the BCT tile installation. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. And that's only at the library, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Item eight, approval of budget amendment in the local maintenance fund for the Wesco High School band to pay for student travel and purchase of some replacement uniforms. Dr. Canales.
We're recommending your approval of the budget amendment as requested. It's twenty-eight thousand dollars, ten thousand for travel for the Wesaco High School band traveling to Richmond, Texas for the first game of the twenty-seventeen football season. And it's also eighteen thousand in general supplies for uniforms that need to be replaced and to provide, uh, make sure the right fit for two-hundred-and-ten band students that need a uniform. So this has been looked at by, uh, the business office, by our finance coordinator, who's there, our band director, and our principal of Wesaco High School. So we're requesting the budget amendment, your approval of the budget amendment.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Oscar and a second by Isidoro to approve the budget amendment for, to pay for travel expenses and some replacement uniforms. Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, I guess this is for Oscar and Coach Mike Salinas. You know, just to make sure we don't, uh, schedule preseason games, I guess, so far away. Um, you know, look at the cost that we have to spend when we have an abundance of good talent here in the valley, you know, that, you know, it's not even, uh, eighty percent of that cost right there, so, you know, just, uh, make, uh, guess, make better decisions, you know? I don't know what, how we ended up going over there, but.
And I don't, I don't think it was, uh, I don't think Oscar was the main one that wanted to go over there, so let's leave it at that.
Oh, okay.
No, sir, but, uh, point well taken, sir.
Yeah.
And we're working already. Next year is a, uh, realignment year. In October, we'll submit our numbers for realignment.
Correct.
And so we will be getting a new realignment, so we're already networking with, uh, trying to reestablish some of the Mid Valley and, you know, Ed Cowell, Mercedes, Donna. Good games, good teams, good gate for our, for our schools.
Good.
Good point there, Mr. Calleiro.
Yes, sir.
Now, for the public to know, the, I believe that the team that we're playing was, uh, state champions or?
They were, they were the state champions last year for five A.
Okay, and they were brought down, they came down here.
They came down last year.
Last year.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the way it works out, if they come down, then we have to go up and, and play in their, in their field.
It's a reciprocal, reciprocal year, yes, sir.
So it was, it was a, a huge game down here for us. Uh, I remember, uh, it was at the beginning, was it the beginning of the year last year or no?
September second, first game.
First game, they came down, so now it's our turn to go back up there. And yes, it's going to cost us some money, but I'm sure our, our kids were, were exposed to.
Right.
To a lot by playing the, the state champs.
Yes, sir.
So it was a good thing.
And we do agree, we do agree to a travel expense, so this year, when our football team goes over there, some of the expense will be given back to us.
But I do agree with, with, with staying home as, as close as we can to, to our guys.
If they want to experience that, that kind of talent, then, you know, they got to go three deep, four deep, you know, Coach, hard to put pressure on you, you know, but.
Or they could play Wesaco East.
There you go.
We already did a district game, so.
Any further discussion?
I just have one comment. I noticed that some of the budget was to, um, replace some band uniforms, and I think we're missing sixty-four uniforms out of Wesco High. So I just think going forward, we should probably implement some kind of, uh, system where we can keep better track of the uniforms.
Yeah, we, we, thank you. We've dis- we've discussed that, and we'll be looking into it so that we do have a handle on inventory and care.
Okay, I think as long as that's addressed, I think we're good.
Okay, and also another note to say is that, uh, make sure that we take care of East, because if we're spending more money on, on uniforms for, for High, of course, it needs to go the same, same way for East. Mm-hmm. Okay, so we have a motion by Oscar and a second by Isidoro to approve the, the budget amendments for the purchase of some band uniforms and, uh, student travel. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Item nine, discussion and possible action to approve a structural engineer to assist the district with the procurement and oversight of construction of a new digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Dr. Canales.
Board trustees, on May thirtieth, um, approval was granted for the procurement of a new digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Uh, the district will need the assistance of an engineer that will work independent from the design-build method of construction that was also approved on May thirtieth, just to have oversight of the construction project. We are recommending, uh, that we hire Shannon Engineering out of McAllen, Texas LLC to assist the district with the procurement and oversight of that construction, and that is for the new digital scoreboard at the stadium, subject to legal counsel review of the agreement. Uh, staff presented this information. The total fee will be one point seven-five percent of total construction costs. Um, and we have Mr. Andres Sanchez and Coach Riojas here, and Amerigo Garza is here to answer any questions if you have them.
I think the paper says you, the architect fee will be six percent?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong.
One point seven.
One point seven-five, bottom paragraph.
I was on the next item on the computer here.
One point seventy-five.
Okay, y'all said Shannon.
Engineering.
Shanin.
Shanin.
I was, I was going to ask.
Shanin, it was my mistake. It's Shanin.
Okay. I was, I've never heard of that engineering from.
It's Canales' eyes.
So.
This is for just the, the structure, the foundation, or, or what? Or is it, does that include the whole scoreboard and digital and all that?
He's going to review everything. Uh, the company has their own engineers that design the scoreboard, but the structural engineer has to look at the specs for the structure they have that he can hold the weight to the scoreboard. It's going to be huge. The receipts are going to wind, so it's got to go over the whole thing. You have to check the specs that they provide.
If I may, Mr. Calleiro, uh, there's no, uh, review by, uh, Chinese engineering for the electrical portion of the scoreboard. So essentially, we're taking it as a product coming in, per se, if I may use an example, as a printer, you know, we can hire somebody to come in, connect it and so forth, and do, and, and watch and oversee the installation, but he's not necessarily going in there to check the electronics and the design of the electrical, of the scoreboard. So we've done this before, uh, with the existing scoreboard, where, uh, the district provided the electrical for the scoreboard up to the point of connection, and then we just, uh, went off of, uh, the quality that we're getting from whoever we get as a vendor.
And we have the one point seven-five percent money allocated for?
No, not yet. Uh, we had mentioned, uh, when we approved the agenda item for the metro construction, that we were looking at raising the revenue for the scoreboard either by selling the naming rights to the stadium or getting, uh, financing it interest-free of our five-year loan, or we could also get a loan from our depository bank. We checked with them, and they will give us a loan also. The interest probably be like four percent, something like that, but we want to plan on the specs that we're putting up together, that we want to finance it for the scoreboard companies. We want to ask for free financing. The couple of companies say they would, so they're going to be part of the criteria we're going to look at.
Okay. So this isn't included with the costs, you know, of a, of a, of a scoreboard? Does somebody overseeing?
No, because they had to be independent from them, so we had to pay for them. We done that before, when we did design-build. Wesaco East High School, for example, was built as a design-build project. We hired, with Rudy Gomez, it's an act to be the independent active checking on what they were doing.
Okay. Now, what happens if we need to get it, something electrical checked out?
He would hire a consulting engineer, and they would charge us based on the fee they charge. The hourly rate they charge.
Okay.
We do that with other projects.
Now, can we tell them, uh, because I know that we've been working closely with, uh, Trinity Engineering here out of Wesaco. Can we add that to the motion to, to, to stipulate that if a structural engineer or a electromechanical electrical engineer is required for him to use, uh, Trinity Engineering? Is that a, is that an option?
Yeah, if the board wants to designate, uh, any consulting engineer for electrical engineering, it can.
Yes, because, I mean, he, he's the one that, uh, that's done most of our work here in, in Wesaco, and he is from Wesaco, and. If required.
Yes.
Granted, right now, you're just selecting the, the engineer. Um, you're not approving any contract.
Right.
So maybe what I'd suggest instead is if you want to make that part of the, the contract term.
The, the, well, that agreement is included in the agenda item, so that.
Right, but, but we're, the, the process is you select your engineer, and then you negotiate with that engineer, and then you, then you approve the contract. We're not approving any contract tonight. Correct.
Okay. Is that? Okay, so.
I was hoping that it would be higher with the contract as well, with all due respect, because we need to work on this, uh, item. We, right now, we have releasing tomorrow the request for qualifications to get companies, we expect to get three or four scoreboard companies. At that time, we're going to release a request for proposals, where we put more details on the specs for the scoreboard, the financing area, all those items. And if we wait to have the contract, approve the contract till July tenth, that's going to put us behind on the process. We could do it, but it's just going to make us delay it longer.
It's really important that we do hire an engineer, local engineer, for the simple reason that, uh, the structure's probably put up all over the United States, all over the country, possibly all the world. And our local engineers know the soil conditions and what is required to hold up a sign like of that size, so really important that we do this.
Yes, the, uh, the agreement for the engineer says that in the event of, uh, electrical engineering needed, that it will be charged at the hourly rate, so. That's what I was saying, we could not, uh.
So we can't make it part of the motion?
My suggestion is that you, you, you keep the motion as it is, to select the engineer.
Okay.
If it's Shanin, select the engineer, and then you can, uh, put that as part of the contract later, once you, once you receive a contract, it's before you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve administration recommendation to go with Shanin Engineering as a structural engineer to ass- Okay, we have a motion by Sidoro and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve administration recommendation to go with Shanin Engineering as a structural engineer to assist the district with the procurement and oversight of construction of a new district digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item ten, discussion and possible action to approve a modification to the scope of the award to Alvarado Architects and Associates Incorporated related to the construction design for Central Middle School. Dr. Canales.
At this time, Board of Trustees, we're seeking your approval and recommending approval of our recommendation toward the electrical upgrades project.
I think it's number ten.
Oh, at this time, Board of Trustees, I flipped up over that one. We have the scope of work, we're on ten, right?
Yes.
For Alvarado Architects and Associates related to the construction design for Central Middle School. So just a couple of back information on this one. The Central Middle School Administration, along with the Facilities Committee, has reevaluated the needs regarding the proposed pavilion, and has determined that the campus, that a camp, another campus need is greater in this area. Administration is proposing to remove the benches and install basketball backboards to use the pavilion that currently exists at Central Middle School for physical sporting activities, making it functionable and comparable to the rest of the district. So at this time, the scope of work, we're looking at modifying it to include covered canopy connecting the main campus to the science wing, which stands alone, and the possibility of adding much-needed restrooms in the science building. And so, again, no design and no adding of a new pavilion. Instead, the covered walkway and the possibility of restrooms in the science building.
Could you repeat that, please?
Originally, what happened, what we had is that the board had approved a pavilion for Central Middle School. In, in discussion with the principal, she has made it clear to us that she would rather have a covered walkway to lead from, what did you say, Doc?
From, from the main building to the science building.
Pat, would you wanna come up here?
That's the one across the street by the band hall? Or by the gym, I'm sorry?
It's over here, when you, back to school, it's to the, it's to the right. And so they have a pavilion that they could use to put some things to play for basketball, but they'd have to remove some benches. And instead of creating and building a new pavilion, like the two other middle schools that were gonna do that, they would rather have the covered walkway to make sure the kids and the teachers are away from the rain and other elements when they're trans, you know, moving periods from the main building to the science building.
That's fine, I think that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, and she has plenty of trees right back?
Yeah, we have plenty of trees. That's correct, and I'm so glad that, you know, you all have asked us, you know, for our input, and so, as, as you know, it's an, we're the only middle school with an outdoor campus, and so when it's raining, we have to hold all our kids in, and so it'd be great with that canopy from the main building, they can walk to the science building, they have to get wet. And I don't know, in the eighteen eight, nineteen eighties, when they went ahead and they built the, the science building, they didn't add a bathroom. So our kids have to go outside to the main building to go use the restroom.
I'll move to accept.
And so it'd be good to have that. Truly appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Andrew and a second by Sidoro to approve a modification of the scope of the award to Alvarado Architects and Associates Incorporated related to the construction design for Central Middle School. And again, what we're discussing is changing, not making a covered pavilion.
Correct.
And adding some other construction that she, that our principal would like to have, which is a covered walkway for our students that won't get wet when it rains, and possibility of adding restrooms to the science wing, which very much needed.
I will say that when this item came up a few months ago, I voted against establishing the pavilion, but I think this is a much better idea than spending money on the pavilion. So I will vote in favor.
Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Patrick. Item eleven, discussion and possible action to approve the proposal received for the electrical upgrade project at Margot Elementary School, CSP seventeen dash zero seven dash sixty-two. Dr. Canales.
Okay, Board of Trustees, we are recommending approval to award the electrical upgrades project at Margot Elementary School to, is it Zetro Electrics LLC from Palmview, Texas? They did submit the only proposal for this project, and we have Mr. Sanchez here and Amerigo, Mr. Garza here to answer any questions if you have them.
Andres, the project in question that we're talking about is, is an upgrade to Margot.
Electric system.
Now, we're talking about the actual outlet plugs that, that aren't in the classrooms, is that correct?
Amerigo can give a better description, but yes.
You wanna give us a little description of the project?
Yes, Mr. Lopez, with me is Fidencio Lvaro, he's with Trinity MEP Engineering, he's a project manager. Basically, what we're doing is we're adding more power to the classrooms. Right now, we're averaging about a circuit per classroom, with some of the circuits being wired such that one and a half classrooms per se are using one circuit, and that's not very practical. And with today's technology, the use of today's technology in the classroom, we really need to have some more power in there. So what it is, is bringing in more circuits, and each circuit could have as many as, you know, six to eight receptacles in the classroom, but right now, we're, we're proposing three, three circuits. Two of them specifically to cover the computers in each classroom, and another one to distribute receptacles throughout the classroom, and that's about three receptacles, I believe, per classroom for the additional circuit.
Now, is that the normal of what else, what we have on the other dis, other classrooms?
Uh, Fidencio, you wanna answer that one?
You're talking about like a new facility?
Well, yeah, if we were to build a new facility, is that the standard that you would use?
Pretty much, yes, sir, because right now, the current building has, like Amerigo was saying, is one, probably two circuits, you know, per classroom, and now, nowadays, you have a typical classroom has computers, so we, we typically generate and design and engineer just so many circuits for computers use, and then we put other circuits for convenience in the classroom. So since this building was built in nineteen eighty, eighty-three, the design and how it was engineered, it was, you know, I guess back then, it was not too many computers.
Now, if I may add, the other thing that, that was caught during the, the design process and the, the assessment of the, of the existing system is that Fidencio saw that the existing electrical switch here needed to be replaced because it's, it's not compliant with code, existing codes. So that's, you know, something that was a high-cost item that had to be included on there. And, and I asked Fidencio, because we've had issues and requests before for parking light, so he added it as an alternate to the campus, and I said, well, let's see what, what it comes in at as far as the cost, because the campus has, has never had any parking light in as well. So that's the alternate part of the project design that came in.
And administration is recommending approval?
We are, the team is recommending, and I am recommending approval.
Okay.
Andres, where are you gonna get the money?
From the mainest tax note.
So you have the money?
Yes.
So how much was budgeted, because we had budgeted some money for this, didn't we?
It's two twenty-five.
The initial amount was two twenty-five, we started. We have some, on the HVC, we had budgeted total of three point seven million within the electrical HVC. There are several HVC units that we've been replacing out of the current budget, so we had the money to make up for the difference.
Okay. Now, has this become a hazard to where breakers are popping, water's getting hot, and, and what is, what brought this forward?
It's not per se a hazard, yet we're not at that point, but the, the staff started calling my department, Energy Management, and requesting electricians to go assess the, the problems that they were having, because breakers were tripping. And it was because of the overloading of the breakers, too many computers or, you know, appliances, charging stations and so forth.
Yeah, well, once, once the breakers stop, start popping, it's, it's inevitable that you need to upgrade, and, or you upgrade or fix or both, and I think we're in a hurry on this, because you wanna do it during the summer, is that correct?
Yes.
So, okay, and you're recommending approval?
Yes.
And you have the money?
Yes, we have.
I'll move to approve. Okay. We have a motion by Oscar.
Second.
A second by Patrick. Any further discussion to, on the electrical upgrades for Margot Elementary? I just wanna say, is there any other problems or issues at any other schools? Since we're approving this, is there anything else that we need to start looking at with electrical problems at, at other schools?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing that comes up.
This is pretty much, as far as I can, I can tell, as far as I'm concerned, the only campus where the electrical system hasn't been touched since it was built. You know, we've done air conditioning, but nothing on the electrical system.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Oscar and a second by Patrick. All those of approving the electrical upgrade project at Margot Elementary, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action to approve the schematic design for the new fieldhouse project at Westaco High School. Dr. Canales.
The Board of Trustees, on March ninth, twenty seventeen, you approved Gomez Mendez Science Architects, Inc. from Brownsville, Texas, to design the specifications for the construction of the new fieldhouse project at Westaco High School. We had several meetings with Architect Rudy Gomez and Athletic Director Oscar Riojas, Coach Michael Salinas, who's in the audience, Westaco High School Athletic Coordinator and Head Football Coach, and Amerigo Garza, our Director of Energy Management, to discuss the layout and location for the new football fieldhouse at Westaco High School. We're here to present for your approval at our recommendation, the schematic, schematic design. We introduce our.
Okay.
And we are gonna have a presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
See it, I'm kidding.
Here's the architect, Mr. Monreal, from Rudy Gomez Firm, Gomez Mendez Science.
Good evening, more bammers, Mr. President, Dr. Canales. Real quickly to orient everybody, this is just a general overview of the Westaco campus. We've got the high school here, where the highlighted areas, the, the area that we're proposing, the new addition. So the addition is gonna be placed partly on the existing parking area, just nor, just west of the existing gym and north of the existing weight room. So the floor plan, the highlighted pink areas are your administration area, so the entry is down here, it's facing north, just to warn everybody, again, to the, to the top of the page is the practice area, the practice fields, and the gymnasium will be down on the lower of the page. So again, you come into the entry, the, the lobby area, you have your secretary and the head coach, you've got your, your defensive coordinator, offensive coordinator, and some shared conference rooms. You have the coaches' dressing shower areas with the, the team rooms and the, the coaches' areas there. We've got a divider partition wall to divide that space up into two smaller rooms, or open it up for larger, for a larger meeting space. At the top of the page, we've got the JV locker rooms, which is about, it's, it's two hundred lockers in that particular space. We've got the shared restrooms, showers, and laundry facilities. The varsity locker room is to the left of that, that's got seventy lockers, and then the support spaces at the end of the building are the garage area, where you'd have your general storage and the, the gators to take equipment out to the practice area. We've got the training rooms, couple of offices in that training area, and then the equipment, the equipment room down on the lower side. Total square footage of the project right now, as designed, is fifteen thousand four hundred square feet approximately. And this is just the beginnings of the, the elevation study that we started. Again, this would be facing the north side, so as you approach the building, this is what you would see. We're proposing brick exterior veneer with some stucco accents, probably less brick around the sides and more towards the front, that would be sort of presenting itself to the, to the, to the parking area itself. Again, the, the schematic layout, Rudy's been meeting with multiple people on the layout, so I think everybody's comfortable with, with the current direction. We do have, again, we'll, we'll, once we get to the next step, we're gonna be bringing in the consultants, so we'll start to layer in the information as far as electrical, data rooms, and, and those types of things. We, the, the structural system is just gonna be a structural steel metal deck joist system. We'll have HVC units that are gonna be on the roof feeding these particular areas, we'll zone them, probably the way they're shaded as well, into three or four zones. And that, that pretty much covers the schematic design, unless anybody has any particular questions.
Just going back, you're not gonna have any of these in there, are you? These tile-looking things?
In this particular space? You're talking about acoustical tile?
Yeah, inside. Is it just wide open to the top or?
Probably the office areas will probably have acoustical tile. The administration areas would have a ceiling of some sort. The locker room areas will not, unless we've got a hard ceiling maybe in the, in the, in the, the restrooms or the shower, but we can leave those open, the larger spaces, we can leave open to the structure.
Does it fall in under budget?
I, we're, we're comfortable right now, I think the budget was two point nine, with being at the square footage is fifteen thousand square feet, we feel pretty confident that we can get this within that budget.
Coach Salinas.
Yes, sir.
You happy with the design?
Sir?
Are you happy with the design?
Yes, sir, we spent multiple meetings reviewing it and, and trying to find the best setup. We took the actual dollar amount that was approved, considered the soft costs to prepare the rest of the building for design, and visiting with Mr. Gomez and working with Amerigo and Coach Riojas on the project, Mr. Gomez has assured us to this point that we fall under that and should have some room for the soft costs that are gonna generate to actually fulfill the rest of the building.
Thank you.
How many, how many lock, lockers in the varsity area?
Currently on the design is seventy.
And that's enough for varsity?
Yes, sir.
How many do you carry?
We carry a little bit less, but it gives you a little room, sometimes based on the design, corner areas are a little tough, but currently, it's gonna range from sixty-five to seventy.
That's what you'll carry in the varsity?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Coach, I'd like to say thank you for, for putting in the time on, on the design of this structure, first of all. Secondly, if there is gonna be some money, I'd like for you to ask for something, put a, a, an addendum to where we don't have to take it, but I've heard several times at, at, at a band hall, that we would've done this, we would've done that. You know, we would've spent very little money, and it would've cost us not that much, and we had it in the budget, we would've done it then. You know, so if you have something that, that you and Coach Rojas can come up with, that you would like to have, and it can be added to the drawings as an addendum, in other words, we don't have to accept it, you know, we'll take the, the base bid, but we, we have an option to, you know what, add something that you consider, I never played football, so, something that you consider that you would like to have or need for the, for our kids in, in football. Right now would be the time to put it on paper and, and give, give our students an option, or give you an option to provide that for our students.
Yes, sir, no question, the responsibility was not taken lightly to, to help in the design of the building. We're trying to do the best we can to be good stewards with the money that the district has provided, and we're trying to maximize the space and the needs of the student athletes for teaching and learning, to be able to use that facility as best we can and make sure that when we look back, we're not in a what-if situation.
One thing I am looking at is on the, the picture of the, of the elevation, the front elevation, the building looks a little low, in my opinion, and I don't know if, if you're, you know, that, the doors, I'm gonna say seven foot, and you've got three foot on top of that, it looks like maybe three feet.
The main entry, the top of the parapets, around twenty feet.
Oh, so it's, how tall is the building, it's twenty feet?
The building itself is, the, the center portion is right around sixteen feet, and the other, the other area that's basically the JV locker room's at seventeen feet. It's a pretty tall building.
Okay, 'cause I'm looking at the, at the drawing, the, the door covers, and I would say the doors are seven oh, unless it's, you're going with higher doors, and it looks like the top of the door, there's maybe like four feet on top of that, and it gets to the top of the building.
The door's probably seven foot, the transom's another two feet, the brick accent there is around ten feet.
Okay, so it, the building is. Okay, so the building is 16 feet?
Yes.
Okay, then you're fine.
We'll make some adjustments once we start to sort of massage the elevation a little bit.
Okay, because I know there's no dimensions on these drawings yet.
Yeah, that's why I wrote it down.
I just have one last question. Coach, which, where will you exit your student athletes to the weight room? What door? Is it between the pink and the purple?
Yes, down.
Then maybe your addendum, like Mr. Lopez says, going back to Ms. Muñoz, how the science building was built apart from the main building and now they're adding a catwalk, maybe designing something like that that gets you to the weight room without having the kids on a rainy day be getting wet? I don't know. That's...
That's a good addendum.
Just throwing it out there.
We can add one for you, he says, well, because I think they don't have one, right?
We have a covered walkway behind the...
Yeah, I know, because I was there the other day, I was standing in the sun, so I know there was no roof there.
Ms. Muñoz, are you happy with the location?
Chile.
I mean, Ms. Morales. Sorry, 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 sorry. Are you happy with the location of the building? Isidoro, what do you think?
The only concern is the elevation, because I know the current fieldhouse is pretty high. And in that area, when it rains, it collects towards where the fieldhouse is going to be. So I don't know how high you're going to build it up, like we did the science wing. The science wing was built up by 10 feet. I don't know where the fieldhouse, how high it's going to be built.
Yeah, I'm not, at this point, I'm not really sure what elevation that is, but I mean, we would raise that building to at least that elevation.
Yeah, because in that area right there, when it rains, the rain collects towards that corner there.
Okay. Well, that's really the next step. If we're approved, we'll get the engineers involved and then we'll need to find out to get the survey and the geotechnical work started.
Okay. They can drain the water for, to the...
Practice.
Practice field. Drain it to the back.
I'll move to accept.
Second. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro to accept this, approve the schematic design of the new fieldhouse project at Westaco High School. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item 13, closed meetings to discuss, A, personal matters, Texas Government Code 551.074, number one, employment of personnel, number two, resignations, number three, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. A, deliberation of personnel on organizational chart. B, consultation with legal counsel regarding audit of health insurance. Item, that's it. Time is...
7:55.
Time is 7:55 and we're going into executive session. Time is 8:40 and we're back from executive session. Item number 14, recommend an open meeting, possible action if necessary, and items discussed in closed meeting include, one, employment of personnel. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, recommend approval of the employment of personnel as discussed in executive session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick to approve the employment of personnel as presented by administration. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number two, resignations, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we recommend the approval of resignations as discussed in closed session.
So move. Second. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the resignations as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number three, approval of organizational chart, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I recommend the approval of the organizational chart as discussed in executive session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the organizational chart as presented behind closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 15, adjournment. So move.
Second.
We are adjourned. The time is 8:42, this meeting's over.